Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call the regular scheduled meeting of the Southampton Village Planning Board, which normally would be on Monday, being held this Tuesday because of the holiday to order. Could I have a motion to open the meeting?
I'll make a motion to open the meeting.
I'll second it.
Of the state at the Planning Board meeting of September 3rd, 2013.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, everyone. If everyone could silence their cellphones, that would be appreciated. And we'll get down to business. First item on the agenda is the request for extension, which has been made by LMR Associates of 77 Hampton Road.
Before you, there's a resolution approving the extension to and including the regular meeting of July 14th, July 2014.
You should have the original.
With a notation that the request should be based upon good cause shown.
Yeah, that's good. An affirmative vote on that motion would be to approve the extension.
I will make a motion to approve the extension of the site plan approval of LMR Associates.
I'll second it.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that you have in the record a letter that I submitted, and I believe we requested a one-year extension. And you told me at the last meeting you wanted a one-year extension. So I understand now that it's less than a one-year extension.
Well, the request was made, I had notated that the, in my notes, that it was, the original request was to July 14th, to July 2014.
That's when my letter was submitted, but I made reference in the letter to the fact that it was due to expire at your regular October meeting.
Ah, forgive me.
So I submitted it early enough so that you have a time.
Yeah, yeah. So if you could then, on the original, change that to the regular meeting of October 2014. Sorry, Ken.
And I would like my letter that I submitted today.
Sure.
No, I have copy.
So change July to October 2014.
She's changing it.
I'm changing it, yeah.
Well done.
I will remake a motion to approve the resolution of site plan approval that goes to the October 14th, the October 2014 regular meeting.
I'll second that.
And I just would like to, I have here a letter, Mr. Flanagan, regarding the issue about the next extension. And we note that, and it is headed in the record, but I also would note that it is within the authority of this planning board not to grant an extension if there does not seem to be any progress moving forward on the application. So we'll see what happens if, when that occurs, but we reserve the right to decline to extend the application if we so, if we deem that necessary.
But you always do, and all I was saying is judge it at the time the next one comes up. That was my only request.
Okay.
I don't dispute you have the right not to grant, but I don't think you should judge it now. That's all.
Time to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass this unanimously.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda, we have a letter from the applicant Pelosi, IOTO enroller, requesting an adjournment in order to address the issues raised by Kathy. So we have a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn.
Roy, before you propose a motion, Kathy, what was the status of the application? Is this for a public hearing tonight, a commensurate public hearing? I can't remember.
I thought it was supposed to be a public hearing tonight.
Is there a public hearing anywhere to help open?
Right.
For another session, so it is continuing the public hearing.
So it would be then a motion to hold the matter open?
For all purposes.
For all purposes, and to continue the public hearing open?
Okay.
For all purposes.
I will make a motion at the request of the applicant for IOT, enroller, and Pelosi to adjourn to...
You're making a motion to approve the request of the applicant?
To approve the request to adjourn the meeting until the October 7th, 2013, public hearing, and also to hold, or to hold open the...
Public hearing.
The public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 In subdivision review, OIA Associate has also requested an adjournment.
Is there a...
I didn't get a letter.
I think the letter was for the work session.
Yeah.
Oh, did we vote at the work session or not?
No, no.
Okay. I will make a motion on the matter of OIA Associates.
Is there a reason given in the letter why the Germans requested?
Because you and he are still working on it.
On a park fee.
No, that's, that's not the case. As I've said, the, the park fee is a whole separate issue. All right, so I'll have to inquire of that and clarify this issue.
So we'll hold it open for all purposes?
Hold it open. Grant the request to hold it open.
Okay, so we'll grant the request at the owner's, grant the owner's request to adjourn the meeting until, for all purposes, until the October 13th meeting.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I can report to you on HABAD that I've, as I said last week, communicated with Mr. Bragman, suggesting various changes and amendments to the proposed easements. I have not heard from him. Kathy, so the matter now is pending revision of the covenants and request to adjourn that for all purposes until the October meeting.
I'll make a motion at the request of the applicant for HABAD of Southampton to adjourn for all purposes until the October 2013 meeting.
For revision of the...
Revision of covenants by council.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Daryl Rosengarden at 15 Pelham and 148 Moses.
Can we have this passed out?
Is this in the file?
I actually don't know.
I just got that today.
I just pulled it up. Now, go on. Sorry, guys. Have that ready.
I'm sorry, I didn't have it in the file.
So at the work session, Mr. Rosengard, we requested that you provide a drawing updated in detail with the information that was missing, and hopefully this is, this is that drawing?
This is a modification on the drawing that I originally submitted, based upon what Mr. Robertson said was a problem with regard to side yard, which is egress, and is addressed. There's now a 10-foot side yard, plus from that concrete section that you call a lowered patio. See that? The workstation was just last week. So to put together the plans that we talked about from that workstation was not capable of being done except for this. The original survey and the original plans that were filed, and the plans that were approved by the building department, represent this, which I've modified to basically deal with a problem you brought up, which is not a matter of code. What I've done in my plans was conforming to code. I modified it because you brought up this condition, which I considered, and I modified that. Now, there's two things that I was planning to do at this board meeting. One was to make that presentation, and to realize that the next step would be to ask for a public hearing, at which point I would ask for a public hearing, and then I would have another month before that public hearing, and at that public hearing, I'm not sure whether it would be agreed to or not agreed to. So it'd be another month. So I would end up in winter, before I could actually continue construction, after four months of being idle. So I decided, do you, to ask for precedent, in the fact that you would approve me continuing construction, based upon one of two alternatives, both of which would and should satisfy the board, or, one of those, by the way, alternatives would be combining the lot, lots, if in fact, there was a problem with the size of the lots, or the size of the house, or whatever, or set, or side yards. The other would be just that I would go ahead and these plans would be put in a form that you would basically approve. That would be what I would request tonight. I know that's not going to happen. So the other alternative for me is to combine the lots, and then come back in front of the board when the plans are addressed in a way that shows that they both conform, which, by the way, as of the first meeting, they both conformed, and they both were according to code, and they were both, they were approved by the building department. So all I can do is say I'm tired of going through this process of waiting to construct that which I intended to construct. Now, I would ask, I would ask the board to give me some feedback, if you will, as to what my requests are.
I'm not really sure what you're asking.
Well, here's what I'm asking.
This plan is totally different from what we've seen before, with the diagonal line in it.
This is basically, Mr. Robinson brought up a problem, and he brought up a problem about firemen getting into the site, they need 10 yards. He brought up that problem. This addressed that.
Right.
This is not what I want to build, all right? What I want to build is what I originally had in my plans. I was not, I was caught off guard in the first session that in fact there was a legal problem, or that council felt there was a problem with the plans. Since then, even at the planning session or the work session, I felt that council still has problems with the plans. I do not want to have that continue that way, all right? If I'm going to go ahead to build, I'll combine the lots, I don't think I need any approval to do that, all I need to do is transfer deed to myself, actually, it's not myself, should correct that. My wife and I own one parcel, I own the other parcel. She will be the one selling the parcel, selling the land. But basically, that'll combine the lots. And these plans speak for themselves, that they're according to code, no one could really object to them as long as they're proper sized and the house is proper sized. Bringing up front parking and things of that nature, I don't know what that means anymore. I've lived in this house for 18 years, I've always parked where I park, it's never really been changed from that standpoint, other than a gate that's been opened to Pelham. So I don't want to get, keep going on. It's like a treadmill. And, you know, when, Mr. Stevenson, you tell Mr. Robinson to speak to Rick to find out what venue I should be in, and he comes back and says he hasn't spoke to him, and that's another month. Well, I'm sorry, a month means a lot to me. And I'm looking at this now, I'm the only one who actually spoke to De Petrus on the, on the basis of whether, where I should be. He told me I'm supposed to be here.
I feel like you're trying to put the blame on the board for your delay, but we've had from the first meeting that you present a detailed plan, still don't have it, this is a different plan. Kathy asked for an actual survey at the last meeting, don't have it. The plan we had doesn't show the proper dimensions, don't have it. We can't approve a plan without a public hearing, you're asking for something that's absolutely impossible for us to do. It's not the board's fault that you haven't met the requirements that you need to meet to get site plan approval.
By the way, I, I, I don't disagree with you at all. This whole thing started that this was basically a formality, on the basis that I owned the lot, and I owned the lot. It didn't seem to be a big deal, as I wrote in my letter, all right? It's that some people feel that the facts weren't correct, that I was trying to do something I didn't intend to do. It's not the case, all right? Was asked for a letter from the building department, the head of the building department, because the letter, or the statements that I made in the letter were not agreed with. Well, then you got a letter from the building department. Then I hear other things, and I'm not blaming the board at all. I mean, I think that council has to address his initial, his initial responses, and I think he has to address the board, and, you know, why would he not do what you asked him to do, and then come back in a way that I felt was not proper? I mean, I'm the one who is in fact being harmed by this. I'm not blaming the board for my lack of detail with regard to this. I was under the impression that everything that was required by the board now had already been submitted to the building department and was a complete file, which in fact, they were about to approve, and they found this problem. That's exactly what happened. So to go back over the plans and all that other stuff again for that approval, it just doesn't make sense to me. It's not a matter, I don't think it's a matter of the board's...
It's just what the law says, you have to submit a site plan to the board that's accurate, and we can't sort of say, well, he must be okay because the building department says it's okay. We, we have a job to do here.
No, no, I'm not, again...
And for us to say, just go ahead and approve it because you submitted everything to the building department, everybody who comes before the board has to submit what we're asking you to submit, but for some reason you don't think you need to submit it.
That's actually, that's actually not the case.
It felt like it, you're saying that everything's fine, it's a formality, and we should just rubber stamp it. Well, we're not going to do that.
No, 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 I'm not looking for a rubber stamp. My engineer, because I thought, when I spoke to the building department, that it was a matter of formality, that's what I thought, when in fact this thing was discovered and they said I should go before the planning board. I didn't hire Gil Flanagan at that point, because I thought it was a formality and it, and it didn't need my attorney to be involved. Then I found out for the first time, that in fact, without any notice, but after hearing itself, that there was a legal problem. I never knew that before. Now, it's, it's kind of like how I feel, I'm in, I'm in play, not, not basically upon the board, not at all with regard to the board. I think the board did the proper thing in instructions, and I think that the board is entitled to what they're supposed to get. So I'm preparing to step back, combine the lots, do my construction, come back in front of the board with two separate lots, give you all the information you need, and proceed on that basis.
Well, I don't think, I don't think he needs our approval to do that.
Not at all.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can...
But I will, but I would like a reading as far as if the two plots, as are described, are written up exactly the way you want them, that I shouldn't have a problem in getting that approved, which is that they're two separate lots.
Moment, sir, you don't have an application pending before the board that complies with the requirements of the board. Can't sit here and ask this board tonight.
No, that's not...
You have every right, if you think you have every right to combine the lots and build your house, it's not for this board to say yes or no. Let me finish.
Wait, wait, just one second. I've let you finish.
I haven't started.
No, no, not now. I've let you finish before.
Why don't you let me finish now?
Well, let me tell you why. Because I really feel harmed by you, not the board, and I'm sorry about that, but harmed by you. I have felt that, for whatever reason, you are, you looked at this as being a case of someone deceiving, and you continued to look at it that way. That was not the case. I stated that my name is on the line, then, and I state now. You asked for a letter from the building department?
No, I didn't ask for a letter.
Yes, you did.
No, I have pointed out that the, the last work session, that's from day one, the plans that were stated as a requirement of the application were never submitted.
No, what you said, what...
Excuse me, I don't know who's telling you about my motivation.
I don't know about motivation.
No, no, just let me finish.
Yes.
I resent and object to your commentary. This board received an application from you back in June that was not compliant with the requirements of the board. It's not usual at all for this board to address issues which on their face appear to be zoning issues. And I did no more or no less than try and go back to the files and find out what was going on with this application. I do no more or no less with this than any other application. I'm sorry that you think that that's something personal to you, but it's not. And I'm the one who pointed out to you at the last meeting, after your council and yourself told everybody that this application was complete, that it's not. And this document does not comply with that, and it does not comply with the rule, with the requirement number two, that was pointed out at the last meeting, that we have to have a survey stamped by a licensed surveyor showing all the plans and specifications on the property. And that's all there is to this application. No more and no less.
You finished?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, I agree with you that the plans may not be complete. Quite candidly, I didn't know they weren't complete.
Well, who does this is bad?
Had you stated that?
And it's not my province to state that, sir. I'm the counsel of the board. I'm not the staff, and I'm not the board.
So it works.
Because I do that as a matter of courtesy, doesn't mean that it's my responsibility to tell an applicant who's represented by an attorney that for three months the plans are incomplete.
Right.
And you agree with that, but then you've got some other condition that doesn't seem to fit.
No, actually, what I have, what I have is a statement by you that you didn't ask for a letter from the, from John Forster, who's the head of the building department, when in fact, at one of those meetings, you did ask for that. You said, "I would only accept a letter from John Forster, the head of the building department."
That's a preferential way that this board has dealt with every application.
And I submitted that.
Because it documents the circumstance in writing. And I go back to the commentary that this board is not equipped, and it's not its province to engage in that kind of a colloquy with the building inspector. Those are decisions and issues for the Board of Appeals.
So I'm not asking you for anything right now. I'm going to combine the lots, and I'm going to come back in front of you with plans that show two complying lots. I'll ask for the subdivision at that point. Thank you.
Sir, are you withdrawing the application?
I'm withdrawing it without prejudice.
So there's a motion then before the board to withdraw the application without prejudice?
I will make a motion to withdraw the application...
No, to approve the request of the applicant, to withdraw the motion without, to draw the application without prejudice.
Make a motion to, at the owner's request, to approve the request to...
Kill the applicant, to withdraw the application.
To withdraw the application without prejudice.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. With regard to Susan Lilly-White, 68, Jobz Lane, we have a request from the agent of the applicant to adjourn tonight's public meeting until the October public meeting.
Actually, it was a, it's a site plan review. He said public meeting, but it's...
Right, that's correct. Site plan review, adjourned.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Kathy, you've made a, written a letter advising that we accept lead agency status on this application.
Yeah, at this point, you know, there hasn't been, we just got the application for the subdivision, we just, we have, the zoning board circulated the EAF asking the planning board to accept lead agency status. So this isn't a meeting to talk about the application, you know, the essence of the application, it is just to take on the lead agency status, so that way we can start the SEACRA review in earnest, and then go ahead with the review of the subdivision.
Do we need to address the issue of the, of the time limit?
There's a timeframe that requires that, a, well, it's a standard for a lead agency to make a determination within 20 days, and unless there's more information that's needed to make that determination. So there's clearly, we do need that additional time. I would say that by the work session, we will have identified if, what other information we would need for the type of, to make a determination.
So we should make a motion to accept lead agency status, noting that we do require additional information?
In order, yeah, additional, additional time to make, make a determination.
May I have your...
Sure.
If you're ready to accept public comment.
This isn't a public hearing for that, right?
It's a, it's not a specific public hearing, but anybody has a right to address...
Do you want to give us some information? Sure, go ahead.
Yes, please.
Please state your name and who's this address.
Good evening, my name is Carl Irae, Carl with a C, Irae, I R A C E, East Hampton, New York, of Council of the Law Office of Jeffrey Bragman, East Hampton, New York. I'm submitting a, just a notice of appearance to make sure that we can get copies of anything that the board gets, whenever it's submitted in this application. We didn't receive anything, we only heard secondhand that the board was going to be discussing this application tonight. We represent Eric Ruttenberg, he's a neighbor, and his property abuts this, the subject premises. We've been representing him at numerous zoning board meetings, and he's very, he's very concerned about this, this application. It's a very aggressive application, and we've been joined by several other neighbors, and, and there's even another neighbor represented by Egan and Matthews in East Hampton, who is similarly concerned about the, the aggressive nature of this project. Our concerns should serve as a red flag here. We have concerns about the yield, about the lot size, the number of variances, the degree of variances, access to the subdivided lots, emergency access, and consistency with the village master plan. At this stage, I heard that you were discussing lead agency designation. I believe that SEACRA would require an application be circulated to all of the involved agencies. I don't, I don't know that other involved agencies like Suffolk County Health Services or DEC, or these sites are in the National Historic Register, I don't know if they would need to be, or if they have been, I think they need to be given an application, an opportunity to weigh in as to whether or not they would be...
Speak a little louder.
Of course, I'm sorry.
I don't know if that works. See it does.
Okay, well, I can, okay, thank you. I think that there are other, other agencies, I have, I have no, no information that they've been properly notified about the, the lead agency, possibility of lead agency designation, I believe under SEACRA, all involved agencies must be notified with a copy of the application. I'm unaware that the zoning board has forwarded any of those, or if the, or if the planning board has forwarded a copy to any other involved agencies, such as Suffolk County Health Services, the DEC, or the Federal Historic Register. And after those, those agencies are notified, they need 30 days to respond, some may elect to respond, some may elect not to respond, and only at the close of that period could, could a, an agency be designated, be designated lead agency. In my opinion, it's likely that the planning board will be the ultimate lead agency in this, but I, I'm not aware of anything that suggests that the application's been, been circulated to all, all of the involved agencies. So I just wanted to, to put that on the, on the record.
It has been circulated to Suffolk County Department of Health Services, there's no one to send it to with the National Register, so they, they don't have a decision that they would make on a subdivision, so they're not an involved agency. They may be an interested agency, we can certainly circulate if they express interest. But it has been circulated to the involved agencies.
Okay, I mean, we're, we're unaware of... Okay, I mean, we're unaware of this. Like I said, I heard this...
Okay, probably in the zoning board file.
Okay, all right, we can...
I forgot to left out that you weren't advised of this meeting because nobody was advised of it. It's just published on the Village website, and nobody gets a special notice about what we're doing, so...
Yeah, I mean, I think that as a...as somebody, I mean, we've been involved with this application for months.
But with the zoning board, we're not the zoning board, we're the planning board. This just came before us, and this is actually the second time we've discussed it. First time we've discussed it at an actual meeting, so we don't even know that you're interested in it. Now we do, but...
Okay, well, I'm glad I...that's why I brought a formal notice of appearance, to make sure that we're included on everything in the future, and we look forward to commenting on this application. We represent a neighbor who's very concerned about it, and we have other neighbors also who are...we submitted the letters on their behalf.
You will have opportunity to make your objections, sir.
Thank you. So I just...I wanted to put that on the record and also give you a preview about what some of our concerns are.
You said you submitted some letters on behalf of the neighbors. Have they been submitted to the planning board file or...
It was months ago in the zoning board public hearing process.
Okay. So...
When we have our public hearing, wouldn't that be the proper time to add them to our file?
No. I was mentioning...just mentioning them to let you know that there are other people that are on our side, not so much to put...to submit them substantively on the record. We'll do that at the appropriate time, but we do have a lot of people who are really concerned about this project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have copies of those letters or just one?
We don't have...
No, they're zoning board.
No, I thought he handed a letter in.
He just handed a notice that he wants to be notified.
Okay.
But we don't notify, right? I mean, we don't send letters to people saying something's coming up.
I mean, any information we get ends up in the file, which can be reviewed at the Building Department. But we don't send out copies of all the information we receive to all interested parties. So we need to adopt the resolution to have Kathy examine the lead agency status, right? We didn't do that.
If you would like to move forward with resolving, would you do a resolution to declare yourselves lead agency?
So would that be something that you would type up, though?
The resolution would be.
Right. So we would make a motion to ask you to write a resolution appointing the planning board as lead agency, noting that we need additional time?
Well, by consensus this evening, you will direct me in that area, and then I'll have the resolution for you at the next meeting, and you can adopt it at that time, at which time the clock would start to run. And is that sufficient time, Kathy?
Well, the planning board can always ask for more time for additional materials, and, you know, we have a Part I EAF. We'll review that, we'll do a Part II EAF, and if there's a reason to do a Part III EAF or if we think that there's, you know, significant issues that need to be addressed and they, you know, then that's a cause deck. So, and then they, you know, need to do an environmental impact statement, but at this point, you know, we don't...haven't done that review yet, so we don't know what...if there's, you know, information...
So our motion is to ask you to begin the review to become lead agency?
You don't need a motion. You can just...she's staff, so you can just instruct them.
Or do it. Is that good enough?
Yeah.
Is it being drafted or is it accepted?
The resolution accepting lead agency status will be in writing.
Okay, so it's to draft a resolution for it. Usually we don't do that with five seconds.
So is she to start actually examining the issues or wait for you to draft the resolution for us to vote at the next meeting?
I don't know. What do you want to do, Kathy?
I mean, I don't think there's any harm in declaring lead agency status. I mean, the zoning board has asked you to take on that lead, and this is the appropriate board to do that, so I don't think there's any harm in doing that now. And, you know, if we need more time, we need more time. You know, I mean, if they pushed us on it, we could say, "Okay, do an EAF." I mean, really, I mean, it's not any benefit to them to push us.
You can declare yourself lead agency status now, and subject to confirmation of that or documentation of that in a written resolution that you can review and approve at the next meeting.
Wait, I missed that.
Am I correct to say that they can declare themselves lead agency now?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? As I said, subject to my drafting resolution, that they can review and approve at the rest...
I'm sure you said it fine. It just went over my head.
Literal.
Yes.
All right. Motion then to adopt...the board adopt lead agency status and document the same by resolution at the next meeting.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt the planning board as lead agency in the matter of subdivision of 550, 554 Hill Street, subject to the drafting of the resolution by council.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The Cheryl and FHW 153-217 Pond Lane Lot Line Modification.
We discussed this briefly at the work session last week. This is a request for a lot line modification between two lots on the west side of Pond Lane. There'll be no zoning nonconformities created by the transfer, and as I think I mentioned, the main reason for the transfer is to reflect physically...what's physically on the ground. This stripe area has been traditionally and historically used by the Cherrills for many, many years, and the plan is just to make it reflect in legality what's going on in actuality. So if it's... Hey, Gil, excuse me, could you just pull that microphone down and speak into the mic? We're having trouble here. Is that better? Much better. Okay. As I say, this is merely to formalize how this property's been used for the last god knows how many years, and it totally conforms with every requirement, and so we would hope that we could move relatively smoothly with it.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
No. I had a few things that I didn't get to type it up into a memo. But one of the things is we wanted to look at the decision on FHW. I don't know if she was able to get that in the file. You know, this will of course have to be refiled, the FHW, that lot would have to be refiled with a new leads and bounds situation and a re-subdivision of course.
Right.
There's a couple of things on the map, you know, that is not even shown. I believe that it should...the map should reflect the two owners, not just the Cheryl. Transfer map of Steve Cheryl, I would, you know, say specifically in the title that it's a transfer map between, however, the FHW and Steve Cheryl. There is a fence that goes around the pool that's on Lot Two with Lot Five from FHW, and I imagine that's there to protect, you know, to be for the pool. Is that correct?
Right, we have a separate agreement. Just so you know, in the contract that we have negotiated for this, there is a provision made for that fence that it will either be maintained where it is or my client will relocate it so that it's on the other property. So we're...we've already dealt with that privately.
Okay. As far as the subdivision, I mean, okay. I'll have to figure that out.
Yeah, we're aware of it, but in fact, we've already addressed it.
Okay, great. And if there's any subsurface, I doubt that there are, but if there's any subsurface improvements in the area that's going to be transferred, that would need to be shown.
I'm sure there aren't, but I'll verify. I'm sure there aren't.
Yeah, I'll just verify that. And then as far as the building envelopes, I think we had the building envelope shown on the Lot Five, you know, on all the different lots for the FHW subdivision, so it should be...those could be modified so it could show it would not require any variances.
Oh, sure. Well, obviously, by definition, it's a conforming lot, so if you want us to show on the final product what a building envelope is, we can do that.
Hey, this...the application is only signed by the agent and not by the owners, and it's a little funny to me that...
That's the way I've...
I keep thinking about this, that in a way...
Done that for 30 years.
Yeah, I know, but both owners should really sign the application.
Well, I could always do. I could show you a copy of the portion of the contract because part of the contract specifically contemplates this. Obviously, we couldn't do it without, so if I could give you that if you want. I don't think I have ever...I don't think I've ever in 34 years had, when there are multiple owners, had more than one owner sign these things, but it might not be a bad idea.
I can actually go into trouble with...
Yeah, yeah. With the zoning board, the planning board, ARB, I don't think I've ever done that. But I can...if you want it, I can show you the section of the contract that authorizes it.
I don't...I was just thinking about that. The...so the decision on...I guess I'll just ask Diane next week if she could pull that up for me.
If I had handled that, I would have given it to you. I didn't handle that one. That was done by somebody else. And I guess procedurally, I know you have the ability to hold a public hearing and not hold a public hearing. I don't know whether you want to hold a public hearing on this. It seems rather benign, and I would ask if you would consider waiving it. That would be great, but that's up to you.
Counsel?
I don't think so.
I do not recommend waiving the public hearing.
I'm not big on waiving the public hearing.
You can schedule it.
Yeah, could you schedule...that's what I say. If not, if we could schedule it, that would be...
It's up to the next meeting.
That would be...that would be great. If you could, that'd be fine.
All right, I'll make a motion at the owner's request to schedule a public hearing for the next meeting of October 2013.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
But not least, Pep Two Holdings LLC.
Actually, I spoke with the attorney for the applicant today, and he said that without...he didn't communicate this, but they had actually gone to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the lot with. So, however, he said that they are redesigning the plan and are taking all that with good planning measures into consideration, including relocating the...
All right, we had Cheryl in them.
So that can come off the agenda. That was a pre-submission, and so they'll be submitting a formal application.
Application?
So.
So we don't have to really do anything with that?
No, not do anything.
Okay?
Okay.
We don't have to do anything with Cheryl. It's pretty friendly.
They scheduled a public hearing.
Okay, I don't see anybody else who's going to add anything to our meeting tonight, so we have approval of minutes from August 5th meeting. Anybody have any additions, corrections to those? Can I have a motion to approve those meetings then?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of August 5th.
All in favor? Aye.
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 I'm abstaining because I didn't fully read them, but you got four, so...
The next meeting will be the work session on September 30th, 2013. That concludes our business. May I have a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make the motion that we close the meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.